Good evening and welcome. The February 19, 2018 Board of Commissioners is now in session. The Reverend Dan Bergy from New Life Church has been kind enough to come and give us invocation and pledge if you would all rise.
I wonder if you would give me just a little bit at the beginning's prayer that we could all pray for the victims from the school shooting in Florida. I'm not going to ask for a moment of silence, but if you would just like to join me in some way, shape, or form, just to hold them up in prayer. Lord God, we just want to thank you tonight for all that you do for us. And Father, it's just in these moments that these horrific acts leave families and communities grieving and feeling a huge amount of loss. And so, our heart goes out to them, Lord God, tonight. And we just pray for comfort. We pray for direction. We pray for wisdom as these families and communities heal. And we give you praise for that. Father, thank you tonight for the opportunity just to make decisions in and among this county, the county of Currituck. Father, we pray tonight for wisdom. We pray tonight that you would give us understanding. We pray tonight that you would give us open ears to hear those things back and forth and make decisions that you would have us make. Father, I thank you for each Commissioner. I thank you for their families, Lord God, and I thank you for their service in the community. Father, tonight, we want to thank you for all the armed forces as they serve around the world in whatever role and capacity that they have. And so, we are appreciative of those individuals who give so much for our freedoms. And so, in all of these things, Lord God, we are thankful and we are giving of praise. We ask your Holy Spirit will guide and direct each one of our decisions tonight. And in all of this, we give you thanks in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Reverend Bergy, thank you so much. First item this evening is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a couple amendments to the agenda. First, I'd like to remove item three from the consent agenda, and that's the report on unpaid 2017 real estate taxes and order of tax lien advertisement. And secondly, move public comment to take place before new business item B. With that, I would like to make those amendments and ask for a motion.
We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearings. Public hearing in action. PB 18-01 Foxglove Acres Preliminary Plat Use Permit. Request for preliminary plat use permit for a 13-lot residential subdivision, type one traditional for properties located at Tolles Creek Road, Tax MAC 14, parcel 18D and parcel 18E, Moyauk Township. With that, if I could have whoever's going to speak in regards to this come forward to be sworn in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not the other truths of hope you got?
I do.
I do? Thank you. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The case before you tonight is a 13-lot traditional subdivision as a use permit. And the reason we're hearing this as a use permit is that when this application was received by the planning staff, we were at 85% capacity in our schools, I think specifically the high school between the high school and NAP. Since that time, those numbers have changed. We've got in the January ADM that we use, but because this application received when the threshold was above 85%, it followed the use permit process. That's why we are having the use permit for a 13-lot subdivision. This 13-lot subdivision, the project is located along Tolles Creek Road, just to the east of Dustin Lane. It came to you in January and received a conditional zoning, conditional single-family mainland, and now it's back for the use permit process for the preliminary plat. It is surrounded by single-family mainland zoning along with conditional single-family mainland from Dustin Acres. The land use plan classification has this area as rule, and across the street is conservation. And for the Moyauk Small Area Plan, it is limited service in the Moyauk Small Area Plan. This is the preliminary plat. This is what they're proposing, 13 lots over 20 acres. And there are two open space designated properties right here, one, and here is the other one. There'd be approximately six acres of open space. The stormwater, BMP, best management practice, is going to be contained on this front acreage here. They're going to be approximately 40,000 square feet. They are next to, similar to Dustin Acres at 40,000 square feet as well. There was a low connectivity score. They argued, sorry, let me jump ahead of myself. They are going to put in sidewalks on both sides of the road, and there will be street trees according to our ordinance put in according to the UDO. And there is going to be, whoops, a 25-foot streetscape buffer along the frontage of Tolles Creek Road. So, the drainage is going to be lot lines, lot line and roadside swells to get the water down to the stormwater BMP at the front, and then out here to a ditch right through this area. We're back to the low connectivity score due to the fact that it comes in right off of the mainland, right off Tolles Creek Road. These were a series of 10-acre lots that are under private, different private ownerships, and they're coming in as in this pattern. So, there's really not a good way to require connectivity. There are wetlands in the back here of Dustin Acres. There's wetlands back here. So, there's not a good way to make these really connect. So, that's why the low connectivity score. And we can accept that due to the layout of the properties. We did receive from the public health, from the health department, we did receive that these soils are provisionally suitable for septic. They will have to do some mucking, but they are provisionally suitable for septic with that improvement. So, Dustin Acres is here. Waterly is going to be in this area. There's 275 residential lots that have been approved of Waterly, and they're approximately 20,000 square feet. Dustin Lane is going to be of similar size to these, 40,000 square feet. And like I said, this did come before the board as a conditional zoning in January. It was approved. The planning board and TRC and the technical review committee did approve the conditional zoning of this 13-lot traditional subdivision. Now, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board at this time.
Ms. LaCicero, the cluster mailboxes, is there another drawing as to where they are and if they're accessible? I didn't see that on the drawing. Is it a turnaround? How's that traffic pattern working there?
It's located, the cluster mailboxes, I think, are going to be right in this area up here, and that would be a question that we can get some clarification from the applicant.
Okay. Okay. And then, you said mucking, they're mucking out and backfilling with sand?
With sand, correct.
Is that correct? But they're not filling. They're just filling to what existing grade was, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
On the application, or at least, actually, it's the staff report, we have a project density of 1.5 units per acre, and I'm questioning whether or not that's 1.5 acres per unit. You only have 13 units in 20 acres.
Correct. So...
You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
So, which one is it?
It's 13 lots, 13 over 20 acres. So, you have just at like 1.2.
Acres per unit.
Acres per unit.
Got it. Okay.
So, it's backwards.
It's backwards.
Okay.
What page are you on, Paul?
It's page, packet page six.
Page six.
Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? If we could have the applicant come up?
Yes, I actually, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mike.
I see the buffer zone at the front is 25-foot. What is it on the sides and the back?
Because these are similar projects all around and similar densities, there's no perimeter buffer required for these. Let me get back here. You're single-family on this side and conditional single-family with similar density, so we don't require a perimeter buffer.
Okay. And then, I see we're on, I guess, map page 16. It's got a diagram of the front where it talks about a culvert to be removed. I assume that's the original driveway, and they're going to move it over.
Page 16?
16. I guess that would be the overall, not the, that item. It's the front of the neighborhood.
It says the buffer in the cluster mailboxes.
Yes. Shows mailbox in the cluster. It says culvert to be removed to the right of that.
Yeah, I think there's an existing culvert there. Let me get to, and what they're doing is redirecting stormwater. There's three ditches currently that go along this property. Here's two of them, and they're going to redirect them to, and that would be what would be used in some of this culvert. They're redirecting the stormwater to roadside ditches and lot line swells to get it here. And then, there's going to be new culverts being put in here and another one, I think, with the, for the new driveway.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you put the picture back up with the drainage, I mean, with the green? Okay, so, the ditch is running south of Dustin Lane or at the end of Dustin Lane across the property and then down the right side of the property line? Is that how the current drainage is?
I think so. And that would be something for the applicant. Let's see, because I think this is how the current drainage is coming down. So, then it's turned this way. I think it's something drainage, something like that. So, then, instead of doing that, they're redirecting it to lot line swells. Let me get back. So, swells along the lot lines, then to the roadside ditches to the pond right here.
Is that the same way that the drainage is being done on Dustin Lane? Are they going to?
I'm not sure. I'm sure it's done similarly, but I just don't know the drainage on Dustin Acres.
And then, I'll save my question.
Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? If I could have the applicant come up, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Dylan Tillot. I'm an engineer with Quibon Associates. Our address is 8466 Keritech Highway, Palace Point. Myself and the owner are here tonight to answer all your questions, and we'll be glad to discuss any concerns. First, the few topics of discussion, we've already talked about the cluster mailbox. There are two parking spaces up by the front. They are perpendicular, and one is a van-accessible ADA space. The cluster mailbox is located in front of the striped zone for that ADA space. So, that's pretty much a striped parking spot, and then a parking spot on one side and a handicap parking spot on the other side. Hopefully, that addresses those comments. Commissioner Hall, you were absolutely right about the culvert to be removed. That's the existing culvert, and it's smaller. It was just, I think, put in, I don't know how long ago, but that will be removed, and the correct culvert size will be put in for the entrance to this subdivision. And the other point I wanted to clear up was the drainage from Dustin Acres. Those ditches that overflow from Dustin Acres stormwater that come across our property will be rerouted along our property line down to, excuse me, to Tolles Creek Road and down to the roadside swell through that way. Those ditches will be sized accordingly to make sure they handle the flow.
Have you had a discussion with folks from Dustin Acres to make sure they're compatible?
Compatible.
Please. When you say they're going to be rerouted, did you guys have had a conversation?
Yes. County engineer will give us the calculations that were ran for that proposed subdivision so we know what to size those ditches for.
Along your 20-foot roadway, are there going to be any little ditches or anything like that, like Eagle Creek or anything else, in front of the houses?
There will be roadside swell along both sides of the new road and lot line swells on each side of the property lines to drain to that roadside swell.
One of my concerns when you go to a 20-foot road is the minimum, that is the minimum, I guess, from the state, is when you put those swells in there and people want to park there when they come to visit, they're sticking out in traffic and trying to get a UPS truck, a fire truck, or a car by at the same time, doesn't work, and people come very close to taking out mailboxes, or they slide down in the ditch a little bit. Is there any way you could increase that roadway to 24, which would take away that problem since you are putting a ditch in the front or a swell?
You can see the typical road section detail on sheet two. We've got the 20-foot roadside swell, and then we've got a six-foot shoulder, and that shoulder's only sloped at one inch per one foot.
All right, so you've got a six-foot, not a three or four.
That's correct. So, there's a wide enough shoulder there to be able to pull off the side of the road for these types of vehicles.
And you have a sidewalk as well, correct?
And a sidewalk, is there, correct?
All right, is the sidewalk on which side of the ditch?
The sidewalk is on the other side of the ditch.
Opposite, so it's in other words, you've got the road, the ditch, the sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mr. Tillot? Thank you, Mr. Tillot.
Thank you.
With that, I'll open the public hearing. I currently do not have anyone signed up for the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this topic? And with that, I will close the public hearing, and I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go and make a motion that since we've approved the zoning, that we move to approve PB 18-01, the recommendations included in the staff report, that it will not endanger the public health or safety because of single residential family dwelling subdivision consisting of 40,000 square foot lots. It will not injure the value of adjoining abutting property lands, and it will be in harmony with the surrounding area, and it will be in conformity with the land use plan and be in conformity with the Moyauk Small Area Plan, and it will not exceed the accountability since we've got the latest report about the schools. It will not exceed the, our public facilities requirements. I'll make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on. PB 16-17 SB&amp;K Investments LLC amended conditional rezoning CMXR for 4.01 acres located on Moyauk Landing Drive adjacent to the assisted living facility to the east. The request is for redesign of the multifamily development by deleting the detached garages, adding attached garages for each unit, and reorienting the buildings and infrastructure. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case before you tonight is an amendment to a conditional zoning that was approved probably about a year and a half ago. It is next to the Currituck House on Moyauk Landing Drive. This is a good aerial of the project area. It is zoned conditional MXR, and the zoning classification around it, to the north is conditional single-family mainland, and all the other ones are general business. It is in the full-service area in the land use plan, and in the Moyauk Small Area Plan is another full-service. Originally, this came before you, a 16-unit multifamily development, and this is the original site plan that came with it, with some detached garages over here next to the The buildings were oriented to face Moyauk Landing Drive. During the process of finalizing the site plan or doing a little more engineering on this, the applicant realized that he was at nearly 35% impervious surface for this project, which would kick him into a whole nother level of stormwater management with the state. So, the request is to redesign this to keep it under 24% impervious surface, lot coverage, so that he would not have to have that extra regulation coming from the state for a major stormwater permit. It becomes a lot more onerous as far as upkeep and maintenance over the years. This is the original elevations that came before you for that. So, now, the applicant, this is the site plan that the applicant has submitted with, there's a change in orientation. The buildings are now facing each other instead of facing out towards Moyauk Landing Drive. And gone are the detached garages that he has incorporated, the garages into the actual living units. So, there's 16 units here, and then an accessory dwelling unit back here. Let's, let me go through here. Let's see. TRC did recommend approval of this, and planning board recommended approval as well. They did have concerns about the design at the time and asked the applicant to add some aesthetic, aesthetic things to address some issues that they had, and this was tabled at the last meeting. So, we've been working with the applicant to get to the elevations that we have now. And we do have a list of conditions that we would like to see if this is approved, the fact that it should be completed strictly in accordance with the conceptual development plan submitted and approved by the Board of Commissioners, that the development will consist of 16-unit townhome development with attached garages, one detached garage storage unit, and one detached accessory dwelling unit, and that the architectural renderings of the townhomes are being incorporated in this approval, and the units should be constructed accordingly. So, if anyone has any questions for me, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
The first question I have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is there an updated version to this?
This is...
Or is this what we're updating? Is this the conceptual design that we're approving?
Yes, this is the latest renderings we have from the applicant.
What about the map that you showed us originally? It's significantly different.
This is the, yes. This is the most updated site plan that we have showing the landscaping along the railroad, more landscaping along the front. There are green areas in between some of the buildings. There are small grass areas in here in between some of the parking spaces, and landscaping along the back and in between the buildings.
So, you have landscaping coming down from the dwelling to the street between each garage? Is that correct? Is that what that, I'm having a hard time seeing that. I apologize.
Ms. LaCicero, I believe the applicant has a better picture on his person tonight. But if you could enlarge that on the, this is the drawing that we received today, correct?
The drawing we received today.
The most up-to-date that has the grass area.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, you can't see it on that, but...
Yeah, and I can zoom in, unfortunately.
Okay. Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero?
I just wanted to ask you if you had gotten any updates about the railroad crossing in that area.
Yes. Staff has received notification that our Division One DOT staff have started the process for it to be accepted and have put it on the Board of Transportation's next agenda, which I think is probably March if everything lines up with their deadlines. But our, like I said, our local DOT Division One staff is confident that this is going to be taken into the DOT system.
That was one of the big factors last year. Thank you very much.
Again, coming to the buffer, what type of buffers do we have against adjacent properties?
Well, because when I showed you the other map, everything, most everything around it is zoned general business, and even though that they're single-family, they're zoned general business. So, that limits some of the buffer we require. But that can be, definitely can be one of the conditions if you would like to increase some of this buffering. He does meet some of our minimum standards for that.
I had additional buffer questions, but I'll probably ask Mr. Miller his questions.
Okay. And if there's anything I can weigh in on, I will.
Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? If I could have the applicant, Mr. Miller, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name's Sam Miller with SB&amp;K Investments located at 111 Keritech Commercial Drive, Suite B in Moyauk, North Carolina. As Ms. LaCicero had mentioned, we made the changes primarily for three bases, excuse me, one basis, three points I was going to cover, primarily for the stormwater issue at 34%. So, we wanted to get into a more traditional stormwater system where we don't have long-term issues if something happens. I can't tell you, you know, someday, our corporation may not own this forever, and we won't. I mean, eventually, I'll die and go somewhere else. But in that case, somebody else will have to manage it. So, we try to make it as simple as possible rather than as complex as possible. So, that was the issue there. And I do apologize for the amendment. We're not trying to be difficult with it. We're not trying to bring challenge to it, but we are trying to balance, you know, good engineering practices along with something that's sustainable and non-problematic for the county as well. So, with that, the only short way to do it was basically cut down the coverage. We didn't want to eliminate the garages. We wanted to incorporate them into the structures such that, as you know, things expand. If you build a shed, before you know it, it's full. And if you move into an apartment and you have nowhere to put things, they end up on your porch. So, we wanted to provide means where people have places to store different things, whether it be household goods, bicycles, gas grills, what have you. So, that was the, hence, the need and the request to keep the garages, put it on rather than just simply eliminate them. We did try to make them more...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name's Sam Miller with SB&amp;K Investments located at 111 Currituck Commercial Drive, Suite B in Moyoc, North Carolina. As Ms. LaCicero had mentioned, we made the changes primarily for three bases, excuse me, one basis, the three points I was going to cover primarily for the stormwater issue at 34%. So we wanted to get into a more traditional stormwater system where we don't have long-term issues if something happens. I can't tell you, you know, someday our corporation may not own this forever and we won't. I mean, eventually I'll die and go somewhere else, but in that case, somebody else will have to manage it. So we try to make it as simple as possible rather than as complex as possible. So that was the issue there. And I do apologize for the amendment. We're not trying to be difficult with it. We're not trying to bring challenge to it, but we are trying to balance, you know, good engineering practices along with something that's sustainable and nonproblematic for the county as well. So with that, the only short way to do it was basically cut down the coverage. We didn't want to eliminate the garages. We wanted to incorporate them into the structures such that, as you know, things expand. If you build a shed, before you know it, it's full. And if you move into an apartment and you have nowhere to put things, they end up on your porch. So we wanted to provide means where people have places to store different things, whether it be household goods, bicycles, gas grills, what have you. So that was the, hence the need in the request to keep the garages, put it on rather than just simply eliminate them. We did try to make them more cosmetically pleasing to match what we're seeing as far as construction throughout Moyoc area as well as Shingle Landing. We are very familiar with that through other businesses such that we do see a lot of different craftsmen finishes. We see a lot of multiple triple textures being board and batten, clapboard or Dutch lap siding, as long as some shake and some stones. We tried to match some of those pieces. We also tried with the carriage house style garage doors with the windows. Unfortunately, rendering programs have some limitations, so you can't necessarily see the straps and the hinges and those sorts of things that you'd see on a traditional carriage house door. But those types of things, what we see throughout Shingle Landing as well as what we see throughout Moyoc and other portions of Currituck, which is a very popular finishes. We did take planning board's recommendations and others to try to add some additional windows. We increased all the window sizes where possible. Obviously, if you have a kitchen counter or something like that, it's in the way. You can't put a five-foot window on a nine-foot wall. But the upstairs bedrooms and things, not only does it help for life safety, but it's also a nice aesthetics piece. We did wrap some windows around the sides and doing some of those pieces too. And we stuck just with the two-story style units. As far as feedback goes, everything was very good. We went all the way back through the community meetings. We had one mature woman that I would say she was in a point in her life where she and her husband were looking at downsizing and she was interested in what the rent was and how this might be and how she might go about possibly moving into there. And she was actually a resident from Shingle Landing. We also got a call about a week ago from Mr. Stefanik. He had heard through some of the minutes and just community talk that there may be some nice apartments coming to the Moyoc area. And he was very interested, you know, relative to the staff, the teachers and retention and how this might be beneficial to Currituck County schools through possibly a master sublease of a series of units. He was talking maybe about four or so, but of course, just inquiry at this point. But his inquiry was the fact that maybe the school would be interested in leasing some of these units as well, keeping available for the new teachers rather than having some of the retention issues that they have relative to hiring a new teacher. They live in Great Bridge or Chesapeake somewhere where they don't have, because they don't have a place to rent. And then as soon as a school opening opens up in Grassfield or in Great Bridge or Deep Creek or wherever, they apply for it immediately and then we end up starting the cycle again. So he thought of it as a very good retention tool as well as a positive outcome for the community. Where best to put your teachers than where you live. So those are some of the feedbacks we got from it. We did try to incorporate, you know, some feedback from, like we said, the various different meetings as well as the planning staff and the boards and pieces. And that's how we came to what we have today. We did look at the buffering piece and looking at how we control and manage the property. Some of that piece was, you know, we wanted to make sure, what would you want if you rented a unit? You definitely wouldn't want to just look out and see cars going down 168 or see a train going down the train tracks. You'd want to see something more than that. So we tried to add some trees and different things to the landscape and that. We also tried to put, as far as buffers, some of the, some of the best buffers you can put in is put a pond in there. So, I mean, short of a boat, you're not going to cross it. I mean, you can walk around it and things like that, but it just, it makes a, gives you a nice setback from other things. Also aesthetically wise, you know, we like to do some things with ponds that make them a little more creative and aesthetically pleasing than just a bottle, you know, a bowl of water, if you will. So they serve the nice purpose for the stormwater, but also can do some aesthetic pleasing with that too. We often get a lot of clients who want to purchase properties on water or ponds or different things like that too. Then out front, you know, obviously trying to keep it still look like a community, we wrapped the windows around the side. We swung the board and batten down, some nice beauty bands on the sides of the properties and stuff like that. I do apologize for a little inconsistency between what you see currently on the screen and this. The grass area does extend out between the units. Again, communication between an engineer and a designer, the site plan would control the site and where the grass and green areas go, that's how the impervious is shown. This picture here, if you can kind of just cut it off at the front where the concrete is and just look at the building, really I'm trying to show you is the building with this picture, not so much the concrete. In some other ones, they put some cars and stuff in and I said, get that out of there, let it just, so they can see the building. But that's primarily what we tried to put forward for you today. And I know it's smaller, but I did print out a larger scale if anybody would like to see it, 36 by 24, so you can see some of the dimensions and some of that stuff in those pieces. But I'll just pass that to Lori and if you're interested.
Mr. Miller, I had a question about the buffering along the railroad-
Yes, sir.
-and the trees that you're planting in the front. In the diagram that we're looking at, it's showing for all intensive purposes, 100% opacity along the railroad tracks. Is that what it is or are they canopy trees, are they evergreen trees?
They'd be canopy trees, so, I mean, you'd be able to see, you know, somewhat underneath, so you can have some-
But it shows them touching, so when you plant them, will they be a consistent?
Yeah, we wouldn't plant them at that size. Obviously, we'd be planting them according to the caliper specifications of what you do, but usually within a few years, the canopies form very nice and start to merge and blend.
Is that caliper specified in the?
It's in the UDO, which is what we'd be following.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, a question about, I see the outside, but it sounds like as well on the inside that you're going to be investing a little bit more, so it's not a, it's going to be more of an upscale type of rental with, that's going to drive a certain income type of individual, not just a place for somebody to-
No, it's definitely a different product from, I think, what we've seen traditionally throughout the county so far. It'd be a very, very similar finish to, you know, how we might do some different homes and things like that. They'll have tile floors. The cabinets will be hardwood cabinets with hardwood fronts, not birch panel. Simply put, they just hold up better. You know, dovetail drawers and different things like that, because when you close the drawers, they just hold up better. And when you rent something to somebody, they're not always as careful with it as you'd like, so you try to build for those types of things. As far as finishes in the kitchen, you know, definitely granite counters and even in the bathrooms too. One of the, you know, you think sometimes it's just, it's a high-end feature, but it really has a great purpose. Granted, it starts to discolor at 950 degrees Fahrenheit. So when somebody sets a curling iron on a bathtub, or not a bathtub, but a sink in your bathroom, there's going to be no brown mark on it, no issues of those types of things. They're also very durable. Plus it provides, I mean, it's a more expensive product, but it does provide a nice finish. We're very much into as low maintenance as we can with it. You know, granted, you have to do maintenance, but if you can design it out, I'm an engineer by training, by degree, and in doing so, after working through a bunch of different projects over the years, you learn that there's different ways to engineer out a problem sometimes. So things like can lighting with LED and different things like that, you get them out of the way where they're not going to get caught on things, not get broken by, you know, Billy playing with his hockey stick as frequently, but also it adds a nice aesthetic touch, you know, and typically those types of finishes, you know, along with wood casing around your windows and those things, it just keeps things more durable and casing doorways out. Yeah, it's a little more money to do, but it holds up a lot better than just drywall and different things like that. So the finishes inside will definitely be a higher-end finish. Solid doors, you know, one, it's quieter, but two, if somebody ever decides to push on one, they're not going to break like a hollow core door. So all those types of things, we try to do just to make a nice product that's durable, lasting, but also provides value to the consumer and it'll allow us to get more rent for it.
Based on your comment, the elderly, do we have any, this may be getting in the weeds, but are there any ground floor master bedrooms?
We're working to try to put one in, in those pieces. Originally, we, conceptually, we were debating whether or not we do, you know, a single-story unit, like a ranch-style property with those pieces. But the feedback we got was unfavorable about that just from a community feedback, so we stayed more with the traditional two stories as a result of that. Personally, we're open to that design, but this is more of what we got from the feedback, so we've kind of stayed with that. So as far as first floor master, yeah, I want to try to incorporate, you know, one or two in there, but you also have to keep in mind now, you've got to fit your living area and dining and different stuff too, and you don't want to have a totally, you know, useless upstairs as well. So it's, it's going to be a little bit of a challenge, but it's something we're definitely considering.
Thank you.
And Mr. Miller, Lori, if you'll go back to the front of them, describe how you're bringing out the fronts of that-
Oh, yeah.
-so that this conceptual plan is-
Yeah.
-a little more visual with it in front of us.
Yeah, some of the feedback we got was, you know, the porches were a little too deep and it was more shotgun-ish with some of the community feedback we got. So what we did was we pulled three feet off the porches. So if you can see the porch wall where you see like two doors, two windows and two shutters, that wall was three feet further back. So the porch would have been, if it's, if the porch is four feet deep, it would have been seven feet deep at that point. So we pushed that forward. One, it gave more living space inside, but it pushed the door closer to the street. Consequently, we also pulled the garage back some and we took the upper story and pushed it out. So now you have just a smaller ledge across the front. And originally, we had a smaller windows upstairs too, but we also looked at some of the construction styles more with the craftsman styles, which were more squared and blocky to some degree. So we changed the roof design on that mid-piece there for what we call more of like a bird stoop. It was a longer roof and it was gabled and different things. So we pulled that back, went more with shed style, more craftsman style, mixed the board and batten in and made all those things line up more, so it became a little, little less, you know, back and forth to straighten that out per some of the feedback we got from the community.
And all of these townhome units are for rent. You're not going to try to sell any of them?
No, it's not our intention of doing that. This is more of a income-producing property is kind of what we're looking at from those elements. It's not something we plan to sell any of it. It's planned to all be held within the same company, SB&amp;K Investments.
And your management office is in Moyoc, correct?
Yeah, we are in Moyoc. We're at 111 Currituck Commercial Drive, Suite B, right over by Twyford Law, Betterway Realty, Edward Jones, Chamber Commerce, Rhonda Gregory and Associates.
And do you anticipate phasing the property or going in and building it all at once?
Well, if we were to gain your approval tonight, we'd go forward and obviously do all the site work. I mean, get those pieces together and then we'd probably start construction building by building as we worked around. It just wouldn't make sense to go in and try to do it all. We'd just be all over top of each other.
I'm just asking the questions that have been asked of me.
Yeah.
Just want for the public use.
Physically, it would be a nightmare trying to do it all at once, but yeah.
And aesthetically, I'm pleased to see that you've come up with some better drawings because the ones that were presented to the planning board and the ones that are in our original package reminded me of the green run section of Virginia Beach and we've tried very hard to keep that out of Currituck County, just the look. So I appreciate your due diligence and working hard on bringing something forth to us.
Yes, Commissioner Gilbert, we try to do that, you know, and that wasn't our intent, you know, with those pieces either. And sometimes a picture, I don't think we took it, I think we knew more of what our intent was, what you're seeing tonight, but we probably didn't communicate it as well as we should have. And it probably, by taking some time and tightening those things up, I think we're hopefully communicating more clearly.
Thank you.
The building at the rear, the small 400-square-foot living space with the garage?
Yes, sir.
And what's your intent for that?
The same as before. It was just located in a different portion of property. The intent for that would be a short-term rental in association with some of our other businesses and things like that. There are no hotels, there are no embassy suites, there's nothing right now. And even with my involvement, you know, with the Economic Development Board, we used to have a different development firm to come in and meet with us and do things. There was nowhere for them to stay. They would stay in Chesapeake or Elizabeth City and different things like that. People come to Academy or Blackwater, if you will, and there's, you know, there's an overflow and maybe need something like that. Someone's having a house built and, you know, it's been raining like crazy. So if you're having a house built right now, chances are they're behind schedule. And until it stops raining, nothing's going to get better. So what do you do? You know, and it'd just be nice to have, it's just one, but it all, you know, you can only do this one at a time anyway. So it's one unit that would be furnished in a embassy suite style, you know, with a small kitchenette, not a full-on kitchen, a bedroom and probably a pull-out sofa so that if you got in a bind and you needed something, you know, your house, somebody's house burns down, unfortunately that happens. You know, it'd be nice to have something like that where somebody could use that, you know, and not have to go to Chesapeake. So that's really the intent for that. Not a daily rental, not of those things, but it'd be more of a, you know, multiple week to monthly kind of thing when you're in a bind.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Miller? But Mr. Miller, I do have one question. The curling iron on the bathtub, was that directed at me?
No, sir.
Okay, just making sure.
That's directed to me because first week of moving into my new home, that happened.
Just checking. Thanks for that clarity.
Casey was concerned about the buffer.
Thank, the buffer, correct. Thank you for that clarity. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Miller? Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll open the public hearing. Again, I do not have anyone signed up for public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this issue? With that, I will close the public hearing and I will open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the amendment PB 1617 with the conditions presented from staff. The development shall be completely strictly in accordance with the conceptual development plan submitted and approved. The development will consist of 16 two-story unit townhomes. Are you looking at me to stop?
No, ma'am.
Development with attached garages, one detached garage/storage unit and one detached accessory dwelling unit. The architectural rendering of the townhomes to be incorporated into the approval and units constructed according to the expanded description given to us this evening, including the additional buffer because it's consistent with the 2006 land use plan and the proposed development is located in a full-service area with county water, sewer both available on-site and is the density appropriate for the location.
I have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to new business, resolution of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners requesting funding by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, high-impact, low-cost road program for Knott's Island Causeway, North Carolina Highway 615 stabilization. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, NC 615 is the road that connects Knott's Island to the mainland. Through the causeway there, for years, they've had significant amount of erosion of the shoulders and undermining of the road and DOT has really struggled to keep that road safe and passing. In 2017, NC DOT at the state level created and funded a new pot of money for projects that appear to be very similar to this or specifically to this, and they named it the High Impact Low Cost Fund. So if there's projects in the state that are prepared to move forward and that can make an impact on a community, then these funds can be requested. Our NC DOT board member came to Currituck County a couple of months ago, met on-site, went and reviewed NC 615 and actually made a recommendation to the Board of Transportation that $400,000 of that fund be allocated towards a project to stabilize NC 615. Under the state rules that created that fund, if more than $200,000, $250,000 was requesting, it did require a resolution of support by the local Board of Commissioners. And so tonight, what you have in your package is a resolution supporting the NC DOT Board of Transportation moving up to $400,000 of the high-impact, low-cost funding to an NC 615 project. That fund does not impact our district. It does not impact any other project that is being contemplated or already funded in Currituck County. This is additional appropriation to come in for a specific project. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions the board members might have.
Mr. Scanlon, I don't really have any questions, but I just want to put out there, previous Commissioner Vance Islett has worked very hard since he left the board on making this happen. He has met with Alan Moran, who was the DOT supervisor, Jerry Jennings and with Bob Steinberg, and he has coordinated those efforts to get someone over to look at that. And I just want to give a shout out because he has worked very diligently to make this happen. The whole time he served on the board, he worked diligently to get this roadway repaired. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that some kudos went to Mr. Vance Islett for his hard work and diligence.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Scanlon? With that, open the floor for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
The race is on.
Well, Marion stole my thunder. I was going to say the same thing about Vance, but that's okay. He's deserving of it. He put the time and effort in quite a few years and-
It did, indeed.
I mean, even since he's left the board, he's continued to work towards this, so it's just an awesome thing.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to public comments. Before we get started on public comments, public comments are limited to three minutes. You see a red, yellow and green light up there. When that red light starts blinking, that's your warning sign. When the red light goes solid, I will give you a nudge. Please be mindful of other folks' time. Please come up here, speak to the issues and be respectful. And with that, I will call Jane Overstreet.
Thank you. My name is Jane Overstreet and I live at 1677- Thank you. My name is Jane Overstreet, and I live at 1677 Hilltop Road in Swan Beach in the four-by-four area section. I want to say thank you very much to all of the board members for putting forth a straw man here for the four-by-four area, to limit the amount of parking on the beach, especially during the summertime. And I also wanted to represent all of the, the, uh, boards that represent the different sections of, of the beach up there. We all got together and put together a letter that was sent to y'all by email today, that pretty much outlined our primary concerns with the permit, and how to, how to get them effectively put in there. And that's all pretty self-explanatory on that. One other comment is that, a year ago, the same board sent you a letter and asked for some work sessions with you, from people who actually live up in the area, and of some of the problems that we experience year after year, you know, with not having permits up there. So, we appreciate your effort to come forth, but would have liked to have a little time to put forth some suggestions in a work session. But moving on from that, I read over the proposed changes to the ordinance, and my personal main issue is how the, how the permits will be issued, primarily to residents that actually live in the four-by-four area. And it seems to be far more convoluted to assign them to specific vehicles, rather than to specific property, because the number of vehicles people own vary greatly. The number of, of residences, you know, some have 24 bedrooms, and some have one bedroom, and some have two bedrooms, and, you know, so if you do it by bedrooms, some people will have 24 passes, or something like that. If you do it by house, then you're limited there. I've read in there where, for this summer, you are intending to give the rental properties in the four-by-four areas two passes per house. Some of these houses have 23 bedrooms, and, and their two passes are not going to be enough. But my primary concern is, speaking for myself, is I am a single person, living in the house by myself, therefore, I only have one vehicle. If, if I have guests come to see me and want to go on the beach for the day, I have no way to get 10 people out to the beach without running back and forth, back and forth to the house. So, these are the things that I'm concerned about, and would like to see it more house-associated, rather than vehicle-associated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Overstreet. I'll call Darcy Messina.
Good evening. My name is Darcy Messina, and I live on Bell's Island in North Carolina. Also have property in Corova Beach. And I wanted to address the topic of the proposal to institute parking passes for the four-by-four drive portion of the beach. I understand it's being done as an effort to ensure safety on the beach, but I would ask how charging people to park, and allowing an unlimited number of cars to drive on the beach is going to accomplish that goal. Additionally, what is going to stop people from coming behind the dune lines in the residential areas, and parking in the already near streets on the personal, and on purpose, personal property, and walking over the dunes to the beach? It seems to me that would increase safety issues, forcing more people to walk through the dune line, especially in the new, with the new driving ordinances, placing vehicles on the dune line. There is no county ordinance, wide ordinance against side of the street parking. As written 1262, the ordinance in place now only covers the area south of the north beach ramp. Excuse me. Also, there's an issue with signs. They're needed, they need to be posted for no parking to be enforced. More deputies would be needed to ensure these ordinance were followed. Another safety concern to consider is that of the traffic that already plagues Route 168, and how requiring these, how requiring those that are going to purchase a pass to stop at the visitor's center is going to cause more confusion, backups, and ultimately, more safety issues. One of those facilities, parking lots, is not even, doesn't support the number of tourists that would need to stop. I, I ask if it's prudent for this board to solve a minor safety concern in the four-by-four area, and contribute more problems on Route 168, which by fatality numbers is far worse than the area you're trying to fix. Our county and the state of North Carolina rely on tourism as its main source of income, and by instituting such restrictions in the off-road portion of the Currituck Outer Banks, it's effectively deter tourists from the area, and leave a deficit in, a deficit in the funding for the county. It is already being said that some of the off-road clubs that have contributed a lot to the area, in the way of raising funds for the new fire station, and cleaning up the beach during the off-season, that they will not be returning to the area if a new parking pass system is in place. These organizations generally come after school reopens. Therefore, they don't contribute to the overcrowding. More staff hours will be needed in order to implement this plan, which would make this a revenue-negative venture. Ultimately, the taxpayers will pay the bill for this. I would respectfully ask that this board table this, and allow the changes and improvements that are currently on the table, a chance to resolve, to resolve the safety issues. The next, then the next season, if still necessary, work with the community and implement something that everyone can live with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Messina. Linda Lloyd?
Good evening. My name is Linda Lloyd. I live at 112 Barracuda in Moayak, and I have two cottages in Corova. First, I want to commend the, the board for attempting to do something to resolve the problems. Anyone who lives down there, or has property there, knows that there are a lot of people who do abuse the beach, and who cause a lot of problems. I think safety is at everybody's foremost in their mind, but my main concern is that if we're really trying to protect the dunes, the horses, the people, our guests, the increased police vehicles, and as the other lady said, people who will go behind the dunes and park, and then try to walk over the cutouts, where people are, are coming up and, you know, pulling in, I just foresee disaster, a lot more safety issues. I think things can work, but I really believe that if we try to implement this this year, we're making a grave mistake. Implementing the new traffic thing is, is already on the table, or already approved. And with anything, if you go into it too quickly, without thinking everything through, it can turn into a real disaster, and cause a lot of discontent, and a lot of unhappiness, and safety issues. Another thing that I'm concerned about is the renters. If, if they go to a, to Twitty or someplace, they can pick up their passes. But if they rent through VRBO, or some of the other places, where are they getting the passes? That leaves me, as a, as someone who might be renting, that I have to patrol those passes every single week. And what if Joe Henry from New Jersey takes my passes off, and then I have to come back, and I have to, each, each week have to pay, what is it, $75 for new passes? I just think there's a lot of things that definitely need to be reconsidered, and thought through carefully. I was in education for many years, and taught both in Virginia Beach and in Moayak, and I, I found that whenever we tried to do something good, but we rushed into it, most of the time, it, it turned into a failure. So, I'm not opposed to, to any of this, but I think that we need to think it through, consider the homeowners, the people who rent, the safety of the, of everyone, and the horses. And I think that we really need to consider the people who will try to cheat, and drive the beach, park somewhere else, walk over. And I, I just foresee a lot more accidents, and possibly more, you know, fatalities for our guests, and possibly even the horses. So, thank you so much, and please consider giving this more thought, and, as the lady said, meeting with the community, and working all of these things out, and possibly doing it in 2019. Thank you very much.
Edward Potten?
Good evening. I'm Edward Potten, and I live at 1260 Potten Lane, Corolla. I work for Twitty &amp; Company Realtors, and we manage a number of homes in the four-wheel-drive area. And our prime booking season for 2018 is, is actually coming to an end soon. It's, it's on the waning side. So, our opportunity to educate incoming guests for 2018 has really already passed. And in fact, for the first time, we had to pull out of our guest directory the list of rules that we include for the four-wheel-drive area, because we simply did not have the time to wait on the outcome of decisions that are taking place at this meeting, to put in for, for this year. So, we didn't have incorrect information. Under the proposed plan, a vacation home of two bedrooms would receive the same number of parking permits as a 25-bedroom home, two per home per year. In the packet, I don't see any language addressing the inevitable lost permits. But according to a note from Mr. Hannig on social media, that the homeowner, or the management company, would be responsible for those costs of, of replacement permits, which would unfortunately be passed to the guests themselves, who are the very ones who support our local businesses, and our, and help grow our economy. As a board, I just, I would implore you, if you intend to do this, let's just do it well. Take the appropriate time, and study to do it well. And, and we would love to help in that. I'm sure there's residents that would love to help with that. From the outset, this idea was communicated to curb day-trippers, but my fear is that the people who will be most negatively impacted are the vacation rental visitors. And lastly, always, on a personal note, lastly, as a native of Corolla, you, you might imagine, I'm not a, I'm not, change is not something new to me. I've seen a lot my whole life. I'm not opposed to change. But on a personal note, I would just say, I would love to see that change go well. It, it troubles me to think that my brothers, who, my older brothers who grew up on that beach in the 1970s, when they come home to visit, would either have to borrow my vehicle, or my parents' vehicle, or in fact, pay to obtain a permit just to go park on the beach. It just seems a little out of character for us in North Carolina, where we don't own the beaches. We have public beaches for everyone. So, those are my comments. I appreciate the time to share with you, and hope you have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Potten. Clark Twitty?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Clark Twitty. I'm here to represent Twitty &amp; Company. Three quick things. Number one, we applaud and echo many of the comments you've heard tonight. We applaud the efforts of this group to talk about the greatest good for the greatest number, for our residents, and our property owners, and our visitors. At Twitty &amp; Company, up on the four-wheel-drive beaches, number two for tonight, our entire business model depends upon two simple things, and that's a great homeowner experience, and then a great visitor experience, coming to the Currituck Outer Banks. And number three for tonight, we would support, and always enjoy the opportunity to work with this board to deliver a great parking permit system for our guests, so that their experience on the four-wheel-drive beaches isn't diminished. Actually, it would be enhanced, and any way that delivers that, we would very much be in favor of. But again, we applaud the efforts of this board to talk about safety. On a personal note, beach safety is a very important thing to us. I remember my wife's family was killed and run over on the beach several years ago, and I say several, 20 years ago. So, safety is very important. We applaud the work of commissioners to do that, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Twitty. Steve Shago?
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. My name is Steve Shago, from Rivers Edge in Moayak. Just wanted to talk real quick about the litter in the county alongside the roads, specifically the northern main part of the county, along Kerituck Highway, Tools Creek Road, Shawboro Road, and I'm sure many other roads in the county. My humble opinion is, it's, it's very embarrassing how bad I think the litter alongside the roads has, has gotten in the last couple of years. Robert Miles and I, I know the Moayak concerned citizens, and another group, we've adopted a few, if you will, highways through the NC DOT program. And I'd like to thank, before I forget, Commissioners Hall and Payment, Commissioner Payment, for helping us a few times. Almost every time, when we do our project cleanup along Tools Creek Road, it's kind of fun seeing you in your work boots and gloves, and, and literally in the ditches, helping us pick up the trash. I do have flyers I'd like to hand out to you, and anybody who's willing to take one. Our next one is going to be Saturday, March 10th, starting time about 8:45 a.m. But I also want to ask the county's help. I've called, I've actually made a few phone calls down to NC DOT, to the representative for the DOT highway program, and I'll just state, I just need your help, make a few phone calls, and ask for simple things. I guess, when I, I talk to my point of contact, there was literally a budget problem in the state for, for signs to put along the side of the road, posting litter fines amounts. You know, I know those signs aren't that, that expensive. They're literally the ones that they put up for DOT highways, on a stake, a little metal plate, can't be much more than $40, $50. And if you could take some sort of initiative, brainstorm how we can all collectively help Currituck get, get clean again, I'd really appreciate it. So, and here are my flyers. I don't know how to distribute them, but, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shago. That's all I have signed up for public comment. Is there anyone that came in late that would like to speak to public comments? Come on up, sir. Thank you. If you would state your name and address for the record.
Paul Gilbert. I'm out of Suffolk, Virginia. I'm the land use coordinator for Virginia Four Wheel Drive Association. We've been monitoring your future decision, as much as we can, across the border. And we're a little disheartened by hearing that there will be a toll effectively implemented for beach parking. I do understand, as well as a lot of the board members, that there's a lot of traffic involved. But please weigh your options. This proposed $50 fee to park there seems excessively high. Living in Suffolk, I can drive up to Dover, Delaware, across the Chesapeake Bay Bridge twice, and still be under the cost to park on the beach. The, a lot of us love going down, or coming down here to go to the beach. I've been coming down here for better part of 20 years. Yes, I'm a day-tripper. But I also spend money when I come down here. I'm getting fuel, I'm getting food, I'm getting souvenirs, I'm talking with locals, and I enjoy my time down here. But if I have to pay $50 just to come down here, I'm going to look at spending that money elsewhere. So, please, take a look at this ordinance, and if we can help, we will gladly do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Anyone else would like to speak during public comments?
I just have more of a question. A lot of the houses, too, we were talking about the other night, they're set up in like.
Sir, can you get, give us your name and address?
Oh, TJ English, 6470 Knott's Island Road.
Thank you.
But about the beach stuff, a lot of these houses and properties are set up in LLCs. So, I just had more of a question, like, how would you, you know, just not to a person? So, when you register your vehicle with a pass and all that stuff, the logistics of that, because there's a lot of houses, like, we do a bunch of wells over there. And a lot of the houses, when you look them up, they're all LLC stuff. They're not somebody's name. And then, how would you implement the permits to those people?
We'll address that, we'll address that during consideration. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Come on up, sir.
Evening. My name is Derek Kenny. I'm a small business owner at 815 Ocean Trail, Unit B, up in the Monterey Shopping Center, up in Corolla. In hearing some of the comments that people have said tonight, I think there's a lot of fair concerns of, of really thinking this out. The summer business is the summer business, but the spring and the fall, for my, my particular business, I could see sloughing off, just because you do get a lot of people from Virginia and other parts of the state, that just come down for the weekend, and want to go on the beach for a day, you know, do some fishing, and hang out. And a lot of these four-wheel-drive people do stop off at our business, and it, it's good for everybody up in that area. So, I think a lot of caution for the cost, and, and how to get the permit. And other people have said, you know, that visitor's center is, and I'm aware of it, is, is quite small for that amount of traffic in there. So, I just wanted to, more or less, put in my two cents, and, and kind of agree with a lot of these people, to just be cautious on this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Anyone else? Come on up, sir.
My name is Stuart Baldwin. I live in Grandy, North Carolina. I came here a couple of weeks ago. I'm primarily interested in some questions, how this is going to be administered. Are you handing out stickers to put on the bumper of a truck, or is it a permit you have to carry and keep in your glove box, or keep at home? Or is it a permit you have to carry and keep in your glove box or keep at home? And I'm also concerned about, many times I've been going up there, it's just for recreational purposes to go fishing. I don't go up there in the summertime for the obvious reasons. It's overcrowded, and I applaud you at least trying to do something to keep everybody safe. So, when I go up there, my biggest concern is just getting not to get run over, because I've had cases where I'm parked and I have to leave a barrier between my truck and where I'm fishing on the beach, and hope somebody just doesn't run me over, because sometimes I'm up there at night. But it's always in the fall, and I don't see any police presence. So, anyways, when y'all get around to doing this, I applaud the comments that have been coming in about taking your time and making this a very intelligent decision that would benefit everybody. I don't have any problem with it. I think it's a good idea in many respects. I just want to see how it's going to be monitored, policed, or whatever. And anything you can do to make it safer, I'm all in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. We'll do our best to answer your questions shortly. A young woman in the back?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandy Schnerla. I am from Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I am the Vice President of Virginia Four Wheel Drive Association. Couple of things that Mr. Gilbert didn't touch on. We have been coming down here. Last October was our 10th year. In October, we host one of our local clubs that's also from Hampton Roads. We come down every year and we do a beach clean. In fact, Twitty Realty in the past has been very gracious to allow us to use their dumpsters, and we have collected tons and tons of garbage off of the beaches. We do it in October offseason. And some of our members, last year, I'm going to say we had about 70 people. There's photos on our Facebook page, if anybody's on Facebook. And one of the concerns we have is this permit system. One, could there be a day permit? Could it be for specific times of the year when it's busier, perhaps Memorial Day to Labor Day? And how will it affect our beach clean? We come down here to help Currituck. We've loved it. We've used the beaches for years. Since that was the itty-bitty thing, I've been coming down here. Again, day-tripper, don't own property down here. Wish I did, but haven't ever purchased. So, those are things that we have concerns with as well. The 70 people that we have come down, 50 rigs, park on the beach, cook lunch, and clean up the beaches from North Carolina to Virginia. We're not going to get those people if they have to pay $50 for a pass, for a 10-day pass, and they're only going to be here for the day. So, we would love to help the board. I know Beach Buggy, we have been talking to Beach Buggy for the past two weeks about this. I know they've written a formal letter to you guys. We would love to be part of helping to remedy the problem. So, anything that we can do, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merla. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Sorry I got here late. Some of us have to work. My name is John Snowden. I live at, actually live at 180 Maple Road. I bought that big house at 112 Maple Road that the tree fell on, and we're almost finished, two and a half years later. I have concerns about the decision you're looking at on the beach driving permit, and I'll kind of keep it simple. That's our golden goose. We pay low taxes on the mainland because of all the investment properties and rentals over there. So, if you mess with the golden goose, you might say that the mainland residents and property owners will get free passes, but I don't want my taxes to go up because you guys make a mistake. Without the Outer Banks of Currituck County, I'm sure Mr. Scanlon can go into the tax bit database. I've done this, our tax rate will probably be close to a dollar, and we'd be no better off than Camden or Gates County. Choose wisely.
Thank you, Mr. Snowden. Anyone else? Going once.
If I could just hang on to what I said. If there could be a committee of...
If you could come up to the podium. Thank you.
I'm retired now.
We only allow do-overs on Mondays.
Oh, okay.
So, you're good.
Okay, thank you. I'm good?
You're good.
Okay. I'm retired, okay, from teaching, and I for one would be more than happy to represent the homeowners down there. If we could have some kind of committee where you could have people from every walk of life that is affected by this, your business people, your people who rent down there, the police, I mean, the policemen who are going to have to monitor all of this. If we could really just brainstorm and have some really good meetings on this and let the community come together and, you know, and help you, help us, and help each other, I think it would be fantastic, because I don't think anybody's really against anything that you're trying to do. It's just that we want it to be done correctly, right, in a timely manner so that no, our economy is not hurt, our people are not hurt, and we can have the safety that we all want. Thank you.
With that, I will close the public comments, and I will move on to the next agenda item. Consideration of Amendment to Chapter 10 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances Establishing a Permitting System for Beach Parking. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, what is before you tonight is directed by the Board of Commissioners as a proposed amendment to Section 10-64 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances. That is the section within the Code of Ordinances that provides already for the moped, motorcycle, and ORV, or off-road vehicle permitting system, which has been in place in the county for some time. First, want to dispel some misunderstanding that we have received in communications regarding the proposed ordinance amendment. There seems to be some belief that North Carolina Highway 12 extends from the end of the paved road all the way to the Virginia line along the beach. That is not true. And the county does indeed have jurisdiction in which to enact not only this ordinance, but you've enacted many other ordinances that regulate the use of and travel along the county's beaches. And you've done that under various enactments by the General Assembly, and that is the same enactments and statutes under which you have the authority to adopt this ordinance proposed before you tonight. Specifically, North Carolina General Statute, Section 153A121, is the general police power authority granted to counties in North Carolina that gives you the authority to define, regulate, prohibit, or abate acts, omissions, or conditions detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the county. Secondly, in 2015, the North Carolina General Assembly enacted a statute, 153A145.3, which provides, among other things, that a county may by ordinance define, prohibit, regulate, or abate acts, or omissions, or conditions upon the state's ocean beaches, and may otherwise enforce any ordinance adopted pursuant to any other provision of law upon the state's ocean beaches located within the county's jurisdictional boundaries. And then, since 1985, and it's been amended twice, once in 1998 and 2001, Currituck County has specific authority from the North Carolina General Assembly to regulate by ordinance and restrict and prohibit, prohibit even, the use of dune or beach buggies, jeeps, motorcycles, cars, trucks, or any other form of power-driven vehicles specified by the county's governing board on the foreshore beach strand and barrier dune system. So, it is under that authority that you would consider this ordinance, and it's under this same authority that you have already enacted a number of ordinances regulating the county's beaches. Getting into the ordinance itself, I refer you to Page 1, Line 30, is language already in effect as 1064B, and that provides, and this is going to be a slight modification while you're considering adoption of other language to this ordinance. There's a slight modification to the ORV, or what we commonly have known as the ATV permitting ordinance, that provides that the county manager, well, it did say the county manager or his designated representative. So, we propose striking the word "his" and adding just county manager's designated representative, and that the ORV permit may be obtained, it currently says, at the satellite office in Corolla or at the county manager's office during normal business hours, but propose that that language be stricken so that permits may be obtained at such times and places as designated by the county manager. And that will tie into the parking permit language, beginning on Page 2. Line 1 will provide that any person parking a motor vehicle, other than a moped, motorcycle, or ORV, that's permitted under different sections. So, any person parking a motor vehicle on the area covered by this section, and that, of course, the area covered already exists under Paragraph A of 1064, that is from the Dare County line north to the Virginia State line. So, any person parking a motor vehicle within that designated area shall have first obtained from the county manager or the county manager's designated representative a parking permit which must be prominently displayed when parking on the area covered by this section. And going further, parking permits may be obtained at times and places designated by the county manager. This ordinance provides the structure and regulatory framework for the permitting program. So, with this authority, the county manager then will be able to establish administratively the locations where permits may be acquired. Now, there has been some discussion, has been reported in the press, that permits would be required, acquired at the county's visitor centers in Moayoc and Corolla. Well, that's one concept or one idea, but the county manager would be authorized to utilize those locations where someone may access the permit, or any other locations that the county manager might deem to be appropriate. Continuing on into Line 16 of Page 2, this is under the existing Paragraph C language. I think it's important to note that already county residents must, and non-resident property owners must acquire a permit in order to utilize a motorcycle, moped, or off-road vehicle, ORV, on the county's beaches, and currently, they may obtain at no fee a maximum of two annual permits for those purposes. Also, when you get an ORV off-road vehicle permit, that permit is tied to a specific So, you must come in, fill out an application, show proof of ownership, show proof of liability insurance, before you receive a ORV permit, and also proof of county residency or county property ownership. So, that's already a long-established program that's been in place under county ordinances for off-road vehicles. What is now proposed for this beach parking permit would be, beginning in Line 16 of Page 2, that county residents and non-resident property owners may obtain at no fee, much like they may obtain an ORV permit at no fee, a parking permit for each motor vehicle, rather than a limitation of two, as a person seeking an ORV permit is limited. It would allow a parking permit for each motor vehicle owned by them for terms adopted by the Board of Commissioners. And so, again, this is the regulatory framework. It will be up to the Board of Commissioners for you to determine, as you adopt your fee schedule, the length of a permit. It has been discussed administratively and proposed that there would be a 10-day permit for short-term use, and there would be an annual permit.
Mr. McCree, can I pause you for a second there?
Yes.
Mr. English brought up a question about LLCs owning property. We dealt with this issue similarly with the parked vehicles when we were dealing with all that stuff. Is that, would that essentially work the same? So, if you're a member of an LLC and you own a piece of property, you would be able to get a permit for each vehicle that may be over there or property owner?
It would be, it would be, it would be a permit for each...
Member of the...
Vehicle. Well, with ORVs, we view LLCs or corporations as one entity, because legally, that's what it is. It's an entity. It's not, not that each member manager of an LLC has some kind of independent ownership, per se, and each one gets to receive two ORV permits. So, that's probably something that's going to have to be administratively considered with regard to how you deal with property owned by LLCs and motor vehicles that may be tied to persons with an ownership interest of some form with that LLC. But that would have to be worked through like we have worked through with the ORV permits.
Thank you.
So, each county resident, non-county resident property owner would then be able to receive at no fee a parking permit at no cost upon, like you would do with an ORV, showing proof of current ownership and current liability insurance for each motor vehicle for which a parking permit is issued. And further, there would be written an acknowledgement that would be signed by the individual, at least, applying for and receiving the permits, that they have read and are familiar with the county beach driving ordinances. Again, each permit would be, shall be assigned to a specific motor vehicle, and liability insurance on a motor vehicle, like with an ORV, must be maintained continuously throughout the term of the permit. There then is another classification or category, beginning in Line 25, that persons other than county residents and non-resident property owners may obtain a parking permit for each motor vehicle owned by them upon payment of a fee that would be determined by this Board of Commissioners when you adopt your annual fee schedule, or as you amend the fee schedule. And the application process would be similar. You would come in and show proof of current ownership and current liability insurance for each motor vehicle for which you were seeking a parking permit. You'd also be required to sign a written acknowledgement that you have read and are familiar with the county's beach driving ordinances. Each permit would be assigned to a specific motor vehicle, and then liability insurance must be maintained continuously on the motor vehicle for the term of the permit. And then, an additional provision in Paragraph, or Line 34 on Page 2, would provide that for those persons who own property located north of the North Beach Access Ramp that is in a rental program, they would be eligible to receive two parking permits at no fee for each property owned by them for terms adopted by the Board of Commissioners, upon making application in the same process that I just went through for county residents and non-resident property owners, as well as other persons. And they would be required to verify that the property that they claim is in a rental program for which they would receive these two additional parking permits at no cost is actually registered with the county tax administrator for occupancy tax administration. That has nothing to do with providing any financial information, because that is prohibited by law to be released to anyone, but rather just that they, the name of that property or that property owner has been listed with the tax administrator for the occupancy tax And then, going on to Page 3, like with the ORV permit, the language would remain the same, but now include the beach parking permit as well, that any law enforcement officer would be authorized to seize a beach parking permit if someone is found to have violated the provisions prohibiting careless and reckless driving on the county's beaches, or if it is determined that the permit has expired, has been previously revoked, canceled, or suspended under the terms of the ordinance. Like the ORV permit, the county manager is, or designee would refuse issuance of another beach driving permit, like the ORV permits, for one year following seizure by a law enforcement officer. There is an appeal process now provided for the ORV seizure, permit seizure, which would apply to the beach parking permit seizure, should that occur. And then, as with the ORV permit, again, the county manager with the beach parking permit would be authorized to establish forms, procedures, and directives as may be required to implement the permit system and ensure that it is run in an effective, safe, and fair manner. This particular requirement with regard to beach parking permits, then, under Line 20, beginning in Line 21 on Page 3, would not apply to... beginning in line 21 on page three, would not apply to, and this is the same kind of exception that is provided for in other aspects of the county's beach driving ordinances, it would exempt any activity under Coastal Area Management Act, or KAMA permit, requiring access to the beach, and that which is authorized by the county's KAMA permitting officer. County employees, county contractors, county vehicles or emergency vehicles and their drivers that are required to enter onto the beach and the performance of their official duties, or a governmental agency and its motor vehicles when engaged in beach restoration, protection work, or conducting scientific research or beach preservation would be exempted. Commercial fishermen would be exempted, and that is a requirement under the county's authority to regulate motor vehicles on the beach, that commercial fishermen, while in the act of commercial fishing, are exempted. Hunters possessing valid hunting license while engaged in an active hunt on state or federal property located on the Currituck Outer Banks would be exempted. That was, to some extent, a request from federal and state agencies that own or manage some of the refuge properties on the Currituck Outer Banks. They'd have a hunting program to try to keep down wild boar, and I guess some other invasive species. And so, they asked, could those possessing valid hunting licenses while engaged in that program during certain times of the years be exempted? So, that is proposed. And then, lastly, outdoor tour operators with a valid license issued under chapter eight of the Code of Ordinances would be exempt, but I would suggest that there would be additional language added there while actively engaged in a tour. We understand that that is part and parcel of their program, to be able to stop momentarily, perhaps, on the beach, to be able to point out something or discuss something relative to the Currituck Outer Banks and wildlife there. And so, we're going to cause any confusion or claim that they are violating with a temporary stop this ordinance, that would be an exemption. And then, lastly, on page four, part three of this ordinance, at line one, provides that the ordinance is effective May 1, 2018. As you know and understand, we've explained before, this ordinance, since it is first reading tonight, may only be adopted by unanimous vote of this board. Failing to receive a unanimous vote, it can come back to you at another meeting, at which time it may be passed by a simple majority vote. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. McCray, on line 33 on the outdoor tour operators, they are already, under that code, having to purchase and have permits for their operating vehicles, correct?
That is correct. Outdoor tour operators, of course, are, I believe it's 10 licenses that the county has provided for, for operation by outdoor tour operators on the North Beach. They have to pay a rather significant annual fee for the privilege of receiving that license, and then they are under other regulations that are required for maintaining that license.
And they are decal, and it is an annual
Each of their vehicles have a identifying decal on the vehicle.
Thank you.
Mr. McCray, so currently, right now, if this gets adopted, is everyone's, whether you're a tourist or whatever, can still access the beach, drive up and down it, see whatever they want to do? This is not impeding that current accessibility. This is strictly just if you're going to stop and spend the day there.
That is correct.
So, everybody, anybody can still
That is correct. The beach parking permit will only apply to those persons who intend to come and park on the beach. And typically, as we see, that are persons who are there to spend a significant amount of time during the day on the beach, whether it be for fishing or other recreational activity. But if someone wanted to come onto the beach, to drive up behind the dunes to visit persons, or just to drive behind the dunes, there'd be no permit required. If someone wants to drive up and down the beach, there would be no permit required for that access. It is simply a parking permit for the privilege of parking and then utilizing the beach.
Mr. McCray, one of the speakers brought up parking on the streets up there, as, that it was, in fact, allowed to be, occur up there. Is that true, or is that something you need to address?
First of all, with regard to parking regulation, counties in North Carolina may only adopt parking ordinances and enforce parking ordinances within communities that have requested by resolution that the local Board of County Commissioners adopt an ordinance regulating parking on their streets. So, those communities that are already provided for in our Code of Ordinances with regard to parking regulation, all came in and requested, Board of Commissioners, different boards over the years, to adopt that regulation for that community, for their community. That includes Wellhead, I think Ocean Sands, and some of the other communities in Carolla. It would be possible for a community on the North Beach, if they found this to become problematic, with persons parking along their rights of way to themselves, or their community association, if they actually own the streets and roads, although I think we've identified that most of the streets and roads are owned by original development corporations. But upon, upon their request, the Board of Commissioners would be authorized to enact parking regulations along those streets and roads.
So, the actual owner of the road would have to come forward, not the community, is that?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon, one of the things that Mr. McCray had brought up was that the county manager could designate places by which those permits could be obtained. I've received significant communications about folks that are trying to figure out ways that can be complied with, yet with some of the burdens or challenges by geographic, be it a remote owner, or something along those lines. It would be possible, in time, to set up an online capability of being able to apply for and get those permits. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, that would be fairly easy to implement as part of this?
We do it now for the ORV permits. So, there's already a place, a process that we would mimic for these passes also.
Okay. Mr. McCray, one other item that I'd like to recommend in the legalities of this amendment is, it's got the effective date of May 1, and I would propose to add the ordinance is effective the Friday of Memorial Day through the Monday of Labor Day.
Well, understand that, under part three, the effective date actually is the effective date of this ordinance. You can certainly add a section that the language that creates this regulatory framework and requires parking, beach parking permits, would only be applicable from the dates that you just stated.
Do I need to add that in a separate line, or?
It could certainly be added as a separate section or paragraph.
Can it be done so it can be part of the reading tonight?
Sure.
So, in whatever section, I would, I would propose that we add that, the Friday of Memorial Day through the Monday of Labor Day annually.
And then, the rest of the year, anybody can park wherever they want?
That's correct.
And that would, I think, resolve some of the concerns that we've heard from a tremendous amount of our constituents and our renters.
That was from the Friday
And it would allow for that beach cleanup in the fall.
That was Friday before Memorial Day to?
The Friday of Memorial Day through the Monday.
So, the Friday before Memorial Day to the, maybe Tuesday after
Through Monday.
Through Monday, yeah, for the full, okay.
Tuesday, I mean.
To Labor Day. Okay, so I would suggest, if you want to add that language, that you would do that on page two, line one, the beginning of that paragraph, so that would read, between the Friday before Memorial Day to Labor Day, any person parking a motor vehicle, et cetera.
Correct.
Okay.
So, for clarity, in case anyone's confused, which is probably me, for clarity, this ordinance will only be effective from the Friday before Memorial Day to the Monday after Labor Day.
That
The rest of the season, for the rest of the year, you can come and park on our beach at no charge. Is that correct?
That's right. The ordinance that I just walked you through would not apply, other than between those dates.
Mr. Scanlon, we had spoke about, and there's been some concern about the, how hard it is going to be to get a pass and so on, by going to the outlets. The ability to get a pass online, to either get a pass online and download it yourself, or get a pass online that you can pick up, or
Mail to you.
Or mail to you. What are the abilities of that?
I don't see the ability to be able to get it online and you print your own pass.
Correct, correct.
But you will be able to, which we do now for the ORVs, people will submit the required information electronically, either because they've scanned it in and emailed it, because they faxed it in, or they have actually mailed the documentation. So, in any way that you get the information into the county, we can process the application, and depending on the time, we can mail the permit back to you, or we could hold it in reserve, and you can pick it up when you come through.
Thank you.
I guess the only comment I have that was brought to light tonight, and we kind of hit on it when we were working on our work session, was how to deal with our visitors to homeowners in the area. And so, if someone comes up, Miss Overstreet brought that up to their house, she had someone come in, they only have one vehicle, they've come up in their vehicle, is there an opportunity for her to get a visitor pass without paying for, without paying a penalty, because she lives in the four-drive area? We've kicked around a little bit, and I just thought it was worthy of a little bit more discussion tonight, as we, as we work through this and different things that brought to life. If there's any appetite for allowing a resident of Corova or the four-drive area to get a visitor pass, a short-term visitor pass, at no cost.
Open for discussion.
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, if you're living up there and you're a property owner, I mean, a lot of people are going to have out-of-town family or visitors come, and I don't see the reason why we couldn't come up with some kind of a visitor pass. I mean, you know, the citizens and they own property, and, you know, if you've got a lot of family that comes periodically, there's some, some way to accommodate that. I mean, it's going to be short-term.
Right. And to that end, I'm not suggesting that we give them 50 passes, or, no one's going to do that, but we said, too, for rental property, do we, you know, just say, okay, you can have a couple in a week's time, or 10-day period, as you suggested, for the length of it. And so, that's just kind of where I'm at. I just, you know, want to see what the appetite was for the Board to do that, for them, as it came to light.
What I'm gathering on page two, line 16, is that if there are five people living in my house, and we all have vehicles, and we're all residents, and they're all in our own names, we can get five.
Correct.
Then I look at Mrs. Overstreet, who has one vehicle, and she doesn't have two, or three, or four, and doesn't have anybody else there, why she couldn't at least have one that would be assigned to the house, as we're saying here? So, instead of being to a vehicle, it would be one or two, or however many we decided that would be assigned to the house.
How about, how about this as a suggestion? We're already allowing houses that are in a rental program, right? The home, the owner, the property owner, gets a pass for every registered vehicle, correct? And then, they get two passes for free that are part of the rental program, correct? Because they're not assigned to specific vehicles.
Well, yeah, if you're a homeowner, you would get
Right.
Just to kind of mimic the
Could we not mimic that, and say, if you're a property owner and a resident, that you get two guest passes, if you will, that are assigned to the house itself? So, each vehicle plus two guest passes.
Well, and I would, I would define that a little further, that a resident, because there are people that have property that have no home.
Correct.
So, I would say resident.
And again, what I, what I think the goal of this is not necessarily to prevent anybody from going to the beach, per se, but to try and help reduce the volume of traffic that has been on the beach historically during the busy season. A couple of folks out here have mentioned a concern over law enforcement and the strain that it's going to put on law enforcement. I actually did speak with the Sheriff's Department, and for the record, I did not talk to the sheriff. But I did speak with the Sheriff's Department as far as, from an enforcement perspective, and the conversation was, in fact, centered on what kind of a, what kind of a drain, what kind of a system, you know, impact is having this ordinance enforced from existing law enforcement. And I was reminded that we have typically four deputies east of the dune line, and their exact purpose on that beach is to enforce our beach ordinances. So, the net result of that was, I'm sorry, there's also four deputies typically assigned west of the dune line, enforcing the laws and enforcing, you know, safety behind the dunes. That the net comment was, it probably, it would, he was confident there'd be no impact to law enforcement's capability of enforcing the actions.
They're basically doing it. For, for point of clarification, back on the amendment, on page two, lines 34, 38, was the recommendation that we strike the reference that is in a rental program, so that basically persons who own property located north of the North Beach Access Ramp may be entitled to two passes? Is, I'm trying to make sure that I understood what the, I think, the suggestion was.
Actually, residents, not property. Residents, right. So, well, we were, I guess, suggesting that we mimic what we, the language we put in here for the rental programs, to the residents, so, Mrs. Overstreet, for instance, or myself even, I would receive two passes, two annual permits for visiting persons to use while they're at my residence.
So, we would add another class that would mimic 34, 38?
Or it could be added to line 24, end of that current sentence by this, and then again, what we already provide with regard to county residents and non-resident property, provide, county residents and non-resident property may obtain at no fee two additional passes for a property.
Any further discussion?
There is one, one thing that I'd like to bring up. Commissioner Hall and I both attended, we were invited, and attended a, basically, a town hall, if you will, at the Corova Department.
Can you hear me now? And I would, I would suggest to you, that was quite a substantial turnout of folks that showed up. I'm kind of bad with numbers. My initial gut was, it was well north of 60. I've also heard estimates that it was about approximately 120 individuals that attended. And, you know, the stage was set very well, in that the first, Don, you know, basically put out to the folks that attended the meeting, that the residents of Corova were the ones that were asking for the county to come in and try and help with their overcrowding situation during the prime season. Kimberly Hoy then went through and read the ordinance as it had been at that point in time. And then, Mike and I fielded questions for approximately an hour and a half, concerns about residents. I would suggest that the vast majority of the concerns were addressed, once the ordinance had been read to the folks, rather than get whatever was running around on Facebook, which is of the devil. And so, in general, I'm sure there were probably people that were in attendance that were not in approval of, of the parking permit. However, I spoke to personally at least 20 people, none of which had an issue with the way the evening ended. So, I, I think the community still had a little questions from an implementation thing. I think online access, or the ability to apply and receive passes online, would have alleviated probably 80% of the concerns of the people that still had concerns, but, by far, the community was in support of this permit system.
If I might, he's correct. I looked at Facebook on two occasions this year, which is about the same amount as I do for all of last year. I looked at the emails that I get, I've looked at the phone calls, I've looked at the fact when I'm at Food Lion, and everywhere else where I end up talking with folks and enjoy it. The four-by-four meeting, you're right. I think we're on the right track, but we've added signs in Carolla for additional beach parking. We've added spaces, we've added bathhouses, telling people, hey, there's more places to park, more places that you can go to the beach in Currituck, on the Outer Banks. We've added We've added signs in a lot of places, I mean, just trying to get people to tell them, hey, we don't, we want you to come, but we're going to give you alternatives to where you can go, including the off-road. We've also added new driving on the off-road, we've added signage that we're going to hopefully put on there to help tell everybody where the ramps are, so if you're going to a beach house, you don't go past it and have to all of a sudden try to double back, so you're on the beach any longer than you need to be. I was just on the beach, again, one of many times, the other day, and some of the ramps were in deplorable shape, some were in great shape, some were barely wide enough for one vehicle, so that's why we're trying to get it to where everybody knows where the ramps are. I've heard comments from a lot of folks out there that have said, hey, the first, you know, four ramps you come to, three of them are pretty good shape, the fourth one, all the locals know, don't use it because it's in bad shape. Well, that doesn't help our renters that get stuck. So then we go, we've got all these signs, we've got all these things going on, and we're going to add more things to it. I don't think we're quite ready to put this in place, but I think we're in the right direction. I'd like to see it wait until May of 19, 2019, that is, to be implemented. I'd like to see if these other things that we've done work, and we can take and say, hey, we can adjust them, we can fix them, we can tweak them, as the words have been used, but we had this other thing in there, how do we know what worked and what didn't? What solved a problem, what didn't solve a problem? That's my two cents worth.
I'd just like to add, I wanted to thank everyone who took the time to send the emails and the phone calls in support, and had concerns with the, with the ordinance. I talked to a lot of people, I've talked to a lot of locals that have lived here a long time, you know, just calling me, and, no, I'm not going to say...
Renting in the Bay?
No, but, you know, there was some confusion at first, you know, the way the media put this out there, they were all up in arms, what was going on, but what they were, once it was explained to them, and, and really, they understood it, I mean, the next comments out of the mouth was, oh, I can support that, or, yeah, this is long overdue. I was out of the area this weekend, up in Virginia, talking to a gentleman about the beaches, he says, oh, yeah, I go down to, I go down to the Outer Banks, and the beaches and all that, and I said, well, we're looking at doing this parking orders, what do you think? His first words out of me is, I could care less about a parking fee? What's going to keep me from going to the beaches is the doggone traffic down there? When's the Mid-County Bridge going to get built? So, that was his concern. He says, once that's built, it alleviates everything else, so, he, you know, that was the least of his concerns, it was the traffic, which I kind of agree with that.
Okay, it's funny you say that. I was out of town this weekend, too, so my apologies for not being in Coroava, I was on the last weekend of skiing, probably for the year, at Massa Nothing, and I happened to run into, in the, in the family-friendly section of the bar, the homeowner in Corolla Light, and he wasn't that, that upset about it, they had a rental property here, and I talked to another gentleman, and their family goes and stays at the inn at Corolla Light every summer. And his comment to me was, I would absolutely pay $50 for the convenience of being able to go to that beach. And so, he, you know, and just to put some of that in perspective, you know, the, the fee is what it is or isn't that we're proposing, but I spent $30 to go tubing, per person, for two hours. My wife and I went one time, because that was enough, but, you know, someone was out there till we just drenched for two hours, so, you know, if, if there's a hang-up on the fee, or the implementation of the fee, I just, I don't think it's as big a deal as people are making it out to be, because we do so many things and pay extra to have that access to do that, and this is probably one of the last areas, if not the last area that actually would charge to drive on the beach. You know, I travel a lot during the winter, because I can, and, and I've been plenty of places and paid to go on the beach. So, I just, I don't see it as a, as big of a physical deterrent to tourism as people have alluded to, and I, I think we'll be just fine, so.
I just want to make a couple of comments, to follow up on what Mr. Hall said, as far as implementing this and wanting to put it off for another year. I've served on this board, this is my eighth year, and we have talked about trying to put some kind of implementation at the off-road area and kind of control the safety, so at this point in time, this is something that we have put forth, and putting it off for another year is not feasible. We need to go ahead and implement something, and like Commissioner White said, when I vacation, I pay for day trips, I pay for different, I mean, if you go on a cruise, you're going to go into town, if you go out to a resort, you're going to pay for amenities and, and extra things, and this is a simple thing that we can do for the safety and well-being of our citizens. We've already implemented a different driving pattern, so I think incorporating all of this together this year would, would make sense. So, putting it off for another season, I, I just, I don't feel that that's the right thing to do at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I, too, have received a lot of comments, pro and con for it, and I really think that a lot of people think we're just trying to make money off of it, but I think the board really is concerned about safety, and I'm like Commissioner Gilbert, go ahead and put it out, the main thing is to get the information out, so people know there's signs, there's signage about where you drive and everything, so I really think we need to go ahead and try to get it implemented this year, and I do like the fact that we're just doing it during the busy season.
There were a couple of questions raised in the Facebook melee, which I did not read, I was told. A big discussion was about fees, what are the fees used for? By state statute, the fees have to be used for services that are provided on the four-by-four area. We cannot take those fees and use them somewhere else in the county. It has to go to public safety, fire, EMS, cleanup, whatever it may be. So it is, it is not a moneymaker by no stretch of the imagination. Just to ease that a little bit, that is not the intention.
And Mr. Scanlon, I heard somebody say roads, could, could the funds from this be used to go towards the service district in Coroava for roads, or is that kind of...
It, it can, if it's going to go to roads, it can only go where the service district is in place.
Right.
Unless those other communities want to come in and petition and have a service district created over their road system, but that's a different statute, but...
Right, right, I just, since somebody, I heard, heard him yell it, and wanted to...
It would have to be a road that's currently in a district, or a road that's placed into a district.
Another question came up, or concern came up about participation from the public. We've been talking about things like this for a year. We've advertised, when we had our retreat, that we would be discussing this, we had a work session, letting folks know we would be discussing this. Through both of those, we had one person in attendance, one. So, at the very last hour, when things are getting moved forward, that's when folks want to speak up, because that, that's when it becomes real to them. So, it isn't that we're not asking for participation, we put it out there, and we don't get participation. We feel a very strong need that safety and concern that safety is an issue in the four-by-four area. The residents of the four-by-four areas have asked us to step up and take control and take charge of the four-by-four beach. And as a board, I think we're all doing that, I think we're implementing great things, I think we're really moving forward to a safe and enjoyable time on the four-by-four beach. It's worse if you go to the four-by-four beach and everyone is stuck, and then everything's in disarray, and no one has a good time, they're never coming back. You have more chance of that than someone complaining about paying a $50 fee. When you go to a water park, you pay $15 to, to park at a water park, and you only have to walk 20 feet. So it is a privilege to park on our beach. Yes, we have beautiful beaches, and we want folks to come to them. We know what tourism is, we know the golden egg, we know that, and we take those things into consideration. No ordinance is perfect. You could sit here for five years and have meeting after meeting after meeting, draft an ordinance, and you're going to find something wrong with it. I think we are a board that is, is very well-connected, and when we implement things, we want to, we want to know how they're being handled. We want to know that it's working, or if it's not working. We're not afraid to say we made a mistake, so as these things, well, one or two of us are, are, but that's okay. So, it's, it's important to us, when these things get implemented, that we follow up with them, and we pay attention to how it's being done. If, if something isn't working, we can change it in 48 hours.
So, yeah, so this ordinance is adjustable, and we can make changes as we see through...
That's correct, that's correct.
So as we get feedback, and if we see things, it can be adjusted, tweaked, whatever we need to do to, to make it even better.
So, with that thought, I'm, I'm in, in strong belief that this, this should move forward this evening.
Is that a motion?
And I will make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Do we need to put any of the changes that we talked about into the actual motion?
With the, with the changes that we've, we've asked.
Well, as you talked about it, we, we've included it, but just to be clear, that will be with the addition in line one, page two, between the Friday before Memorial Day to Labor Day, at the beginning of that sentence on line one, and with the addition at line 24, with the following language, "Further, county residents and non-resident property owners may obtain at no fee two additional parking permits that are not assigned to a specific motor vehicle."
Did you say property owners?
I'm sorry?
It's to the four-by-four.
Residents, residents, not property owners.
Residents.
Residents.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it should be county residents may obtain. And, and then also adding at line 34 on page three, the language, "While actively engaged in an outdoor tour," so that, that will read, "Outdoor tour operators with a valid license issued under Article 4, Chapter 8 of this code, while actively engaged in an outdoor tour."
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The vote is six to one, the motion will be, the ordinance will be carried over to the next meeting, which at that time, it will just need a majority vote. Moving on to board appointments, if, if we can, just take a second to let folks clear out. Take five, five-minute recess, thank you.
We're, we're, we're at board appointments.
I guess that's me.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to, I'd like to appoint Kimberly Hoy to the Coroava Road Service District to replace Mr. Mark Penner, and the other person on our agenda was Jay Loffmiller, who's the chief of police up there currently, to replace the previous chief, whose term has come up as a representative from the fire department.
And I'll second those motions, or appointments.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda.
Motion for approval.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, on the...
Apologize?
No, consent, consent agenda, just, just wanted to briefly, there was a number that jumped out at me, Mr. Scanlon, on page 86, just shy of $700,000 going into daycare, and I just would like to know if you could elaborate for that. It wasn't really in the notes. Yes, sir.
Page 86?
86, I think it's 86, let me double-check my math. Yes, daycare, 695 on page, it's a, sorry.
Back a page.
Back a page, sorry.
That is reflecting a, if you say, there's actually a, a grant opposed, I mean, a, a state revenue that's offsetting that, that is not county funds.
Okay, yeah, it, it said it in there, just wasn't, it didn't really read out that well, so...
Any further, any further discussion?
Still motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously, unanimously. Moving on to Commissioner's report, Commissioner Hall?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner White?
Let's see here, a couple of things, now that everybody from Corolla left, the NC-12 beautification project is humming along, so for those of you that noticed that the, the ground was tore up at the state line, the sign went back in this week, and we should see plantings coming along pretty soon, so I'm pretty stoked about that, that was a personal one for me. And the Coroava Park, we're putting in a playset, and I think they are close to getting that in, if, if not this week sometime, I believe.
The, the playground equipment itself is installed now.
Okay.
We have to go back up now and do some additional work around the fall area.
Puff it up. And lastly, you know, we get emails from the county staff for different stuff, and there's quite a few job postings on the county website, so I just want to remind people to check the county website, become part of the team.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Beaumont?
I have no life, nothing to add.
Commissioner Etheridge?
I have nothing to add.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one item just to, to bring up. I want to applaud the students at Currituck County High School today, with all of the events that's happened around the world and in our country with threats and shootings, and just the negativity that's happened today at Currituck High School. Prior to school starting, the students made a circle around the flagpole and prayed for other students that's, that's been involved and, and victims of the events, and for the three children, well, they're not children, they're, they're students, they're young adults that were injured over the weekend in the lower end of the county, so I just applaud those students, and it just warms my heart to know that they have brought prayer, although it's not always acceptable in school, but they did that today, and it was just heartwarming and very touching to see that, so I just want to applaud each one of those young folks, the teachers, and the staff of Currituck County High School, too. It was just, it was an event that was just very heartwarming, and I just want to applaud them and thank them for that.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Commissioner Payment?
A few things tonight. First of all, I just want to recognize, Lower Currituck, last week, they went through their ISO rate testing last week, and they, they performed well, and I just want to applaud them for, for the efforts that they did, and the time that they put in for the training, and just excited that you, we had that level of commitment to, to perform, so shout-out to Lower Currituck, and to all the fire departments for their, for their training and what they're doing for us. Couple of things, and some people may have seen that on Papa Branch Road in the Grandi area, DOT made a lot of improvements down on Papa Branch Road, they've been increasing the culvert sizes, it looks nice, they've, it's going to help, help a lot of the drainage issues down there, so if people want to know what was going on, it was a project that, that went well, went pretty fast, so I was happy to see that, and it should clear up some, some areas of drainage concernage down the Papa Branch Road area. And then, you know, and then tonight, I was really, I was really impressed with the amount of support that I did hear out here tonight for the, for the ordinance moving forward. There were some concerns, but all in all, I believe that, that everybody wanted to see something, and, and they were kind of happy that, that we were implementing something. And then, lastly, tomorrow, there is a meeting in Dare County that I will be attending, it's regarding offshore drilling off our coast. I'll be attending for the county as a commissioner down there, just to, to listen to the information that's going to be presented, to help to bring back to this board here, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Payment, I have...
Commissioner, Chairman, excuse me, I might, I did forget one, and might kind of remind you of it. Sometimes we don't always thank our staff for hard work, great work, and it helps the community. Eric Weatherly, and Will Creef, and the Soil and Water Management folks for the region, stepped up, and they said, there's a problem in one of our areas, Laurel Woods, it flooded pretty bad, where folks couldn't even get out in a couple of the storms. They got up with a state, and they actually cleared the ditch and the pipe on the opposite side of the road of 168, and they, all the way back to the creek, that ditch was cleared out, so hopefully that will allow water to flow and solve a problem, so people can get in and out, and not any more cars being ruined. So thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it, thank you, staff.
I have nothing this evening.
I have nothing this evening. County managers report? Mr. Chairman, I would like to just for, for the public, I guess, several commissioners will be attending a meeting tomorrow in Washington, North Carolina. It is a pre-scope meeting, which is a meeting with various state and federal agencies. We are going down with a, a request to once again seek a dredging permit for the, the channel, the historic channel at Heritage Park, the Whalehead Club. And so several commissioners will be in Washington, North Carolina pursuant of that. We will be bringing more public information out, but we want to go ahead and announce that we have been approached by NC DOT that is going to replace a culvert on Waterlily Road. It's in a position that will require the road to be completely shut down for 24 hours to 36 hours. And so we will be working with NC DOT and the general public to make sure that information is out. There will be reader boards, there'll be information sent, but right now, the, the target date is to start sometime late Friday, I think it's March 17th, later in the evening, and to work through Saturday to get that project done. And again, it will completely shut off that road. Staff is working with our public safety agencies to make sure that we have an appropriate plan in place, that we have a response prepared in case we need to respond to that area. But again, wanted to get it out there, but more information will be forthcoming as we move through the next couple of weeks.
Thank you for bringing this forward, Mr. Scanlon. With that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. Now I'll open the special meeting of Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Board and hand it over to Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, just like you often sit as the tourism development authority, the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District is a, another third entity that you sit as the board of directors for that organization. We are bringing tonight for your consideration, I believe it's three budget amendments. The first one, the total budget amendment is for $35,000. This is operational, to move operational monies around within the, the current budget to support chemical and some state fees that we have to pay. The second amendment is a request to increase our legal services fund. As it has been discussed before, we are in long protracted litigation with Coastland Corporation that continues. We need to add additional funds to the legal fund. And the last budget amendment, we are looking, actually, excuse me, the second one is actually moving money from a construction fund that is part of the current replacement. There's some additional capital expenditures we have to play, pay on the existing plant that need to be addressed so that it gets through one more season. So that's actually the second budget amendment. The third one is increasing the legal fee. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have on any one of those budget amendments.
Any questions for Mr. McCree? We'll open the floor for a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. And with that, I will call for an adjournment of the special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District.
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you all for coming this evening.